Good evening, everyone. Welcome to a special board of education meeting with the Commerce City Council and Mayor. First of all, we will have our interpretation statement for our people listening to us out in YouTube.
Usted puede escuchar la interpretación en vivo de las reuniones del Comité de Educación a través de conferencia telefónica. Por favor, llame al 303-867-0199. Otra vez, 303-867-0199. Cuando lo indique, ingrese el código 366589. Otra vez, 366589, seguido por la tecla de número. Cuando lo indique, diga su nombre, seguido por la tecla de número. Asegúrese de bajar el volumen en su computadora o dispositivo donde esté observando la reunión. Opciones de títulos: Close caption. YouTube ofrece subtítulos en una variedad de idiomas para videos cuando lo vean posteriormente, no en vivo. Para ver un video en YouTube con subtítulos en su idioma de preferencia, por favor haga clic en CC en la esquina inferior derecha de la pantalla de YouTube. Haga clic en ícono de configuraciones, Settings, en la parte inferior derecha de la pantalla de YouTube. Y haga clic en Auto translate o English y seleccione el idioma de su preferencia. Las agendas y minutos del comité se encontrarán en la página web del comité de educación dentro de la página principal de Adams 14.
Thank you. Again, welcome to this special meeting with the City of Commerce City. We do these every once in a while on the fifth Monday, when there's a fifth Monday. We do a joint meeting just to update each other on the happenings in the district as well as this city and any projects that we may be doing together. So I'd like to go around the table this evening and have everybody introduce themselves. So if we could start here with Director Estrada.
Hola, hi everybody. My name is Jennifer Estrada. Hope you can hear me. I was appointed in March and we've been doing a lot of great work. Is there anything else?
Good evening. I'm Erica Garcia and I'm the executive director of elementary schools here at Adams 14.
I am Sam Schneider. I'm the executive director of high schools here at Adams 14.
Good evening. I'm Jeremy Jimenez and I'm the executive director of middle schools.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Allen Thomas on Commerce City Council Ward Two.
Susan Noble, Commerce City City Council.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to a special Board of Education meeting with the Commerce City Council and Mayor. First of all, we will have our interpretation statement for our people listening to us out in YouTube.
Usted puede escuchar la interpretación al español en vivo de las reuniones del Comité de Educación a través de conferencia telefónica. Por favor, llame al 303-867-0199. Otra vez, 303-867-0199. Cuando lo indique, ingrese el código 366589. Otra vez, 366589, seguido por la tecla de número. Cuando lo indique, diga su nombre, seguido por la tecla de número. Asegúrese de bajar el volumen en su computadora o dispositivo donde esté observando la reunión. Opciones de títulos: Close caption. YouTube ofrece subtítulos en una variedad de idiomas para videos cuando lo vean posteriormente, no en vivo. Para ver un video en YouTube con subtítulos en su idioma de preferencia, por favor haga clic en CC en la esquina inferior derecha de la pantalla de YouTube. Haga clic en ícono de configuraciones, Settings, en la parte inferior derecha de la pantalla de YouTube. Y haga clic en Auto Translate o English y seleccione el idioma de su preferencia. Las agendas y minutos del comité se encontrarán en la página web del Comité de Educación dentro de la página principal de Adams 14.
Thank you. Again, welcome to this special meeting with the City of Commerce City. We do these every once in a while on the fifth Monday, when there's a fifth Monday, we do a joint meeting just to update each other on the happenings in the district as well as this city and any projects that we may be doing together. So I'd like to go around the table this evening and have everybody introduce themselves. So if we could start here with Director Estrada.
Hola, hi everybody. My name is Jennifer Estrada. Hope you can hear me. I was appointed in March and we've been doing a lot of great work. Is there anything else?
Good evening. I'm Erica Garcia and I'm the Executive Director of Elementary Schools here at Adams 14.
I am Sam Schneider. I'm the Executive Director of High Schools here at Adams 14.
Good evening. I'm Jeremy Jimenez and I'm the Executive Director of Middle Schools.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Ellen Thomas on Commerce City Council Ward Two.
Susan Noble, Commerce City City Council, Ward Four.
Roger Tinkham, Lord City Manager for Commerce City.
Megan Grimes, At Large Council Member for Commerce City.
Jose Guardiola, City Council At Large.
Oscar Madera, City Council Ward One.
Nicole Frank, City Council, Mayor Proton.
Robin Smith, City Council At Large.
Benjamin Huesman, Benjamin Huesman, Mayor of Commerce City.
Maria Gonzalez, Founder and Executive Director of Adelante Community Development.
Sheila Burke, Chief Academic Officer for Adams 14.
Mario Marquez, Chief Business Officer for Adams 14.
Renee Lovato, Board of Education Vice President. I was elected in November 2019.
Maria Sylvia, Secretary of the Board, and I was appointed February 2020.
Connie Quintana, Treasurer, and this is my last year.
Hello, I'm Carla Loria, Superintendent for Adams 14.
And I'm Ramona Lewis, the President, and I was also elected in 2019. We thank all of you for being here. It's great seeing you in person. We've had a couple of these meetings virtually, but this is the first time we've had it in person. So we're excited to welcome you to our district. So the first report that we have this evening is an enrollment update from the district. So if I could pass it over to Dr. Loria, she will take it from here.
Good evening. So, into Madam President, and thank you, Board members from the City of Commerce for joining today. We do have exciting news actually about our enrollment. We have, and if you click, there you go. So we have a slide with four data points here. Top left, you see here the total enrollment, and we are happy to report that the projection was to have 5,660 students. However, we have surpassed that number. We are, as of today, to, we have 6,275, I can, yes, 75, I cannot see far very well. Now, this includes some of our no-shows that we are still trying to find. So in reality, we have 6,035 students coming in. But that is over our projection by 375 students, so that's a good problem to have. Problem because we're now trying to find teachers, we're looking for how to fund and where to place the students and maybe even dividing some classrooms, but those are good problems to have. The next one, top right, is the enrollment range by school. So our smallest classroom is in a pre-K class with 55, or in a school, 55 students in the school at Sanviel Preschool. And our largest enrollment is at the high school with 1,782. I should be reading from here that I can see the numbers better. The next one is the enrollment by level. So we have pre-K students, I am seriously going to turn here because I cannot read those. So we have our preschool students. Preschool and pre-K are 411 students. K-5, we have a total of 2,439 students. 6-8, grades three, six through eight, we have 1,402 students. And our students in nine through 12, we have 2,023 students. And then ranges enrollment is in the pre-K, our smallest group, we have 411. And our largest group is our 12th grade with 527 students. So we're excited that our enrollment continues to grow. Actually, by the day, we have been increasing a few students each day, and we expect to see that. As you probably know, we have been having a campaign to attract students, not only those that live in our, in our area that we may have lost to homeschool or any other options they have to come back, but also we are trying to attract students from other districts so that we can offer the great things that we have here in the district. So I don't know if there's any questions about enrollment. If not, we can go to the next slide, Monica. So no questions? So I just wanted to mention a little bit of our priorities. As a district, we are really focusing on instruction, and that includes unit planning, professional learning communities, and acceleration and interventions. What that means really is we are setting aside days, professional days. We're working with our administrators and our teachers to work on planning lessons in the units of study. We know great instruction starts with great planning, and we have been dedicating a great deal of time supporting our administrators and our teachers develop great lessons so that we can engage our students and then start seeing the results in our student growth and student achievement. We are doing that through professional learning communities. This is basically teachers, meeting with teachers and discussing their, the lessons that are coming up may be hard to teach concepts and how to better teach those. During these meetings, we also do data analysis, but we do not stay with data analysis. We know that we can actually have a data overload. We focus as well on action plannings based on what the data is telling us. And from that, we then trickle down to acceleration and intervention opportunities. After COVID, I know that we talk a lot about learning loss, and I do the quote mark because I really do not like that term very much. I think our students and us as adults and community have learned a great deal of things during this hard time. So we want to see it as an opportunity for us to learn how to accelerate the learning of our students, you know, to serve them better. So those are the three key priorities around instruction. We're also working as a team, and one of my priorities in the Board of Education goals is to be more transparent and to have more opportunities like this where we can share the great things that are happening in the district and share what are some of the wins and what are the challenges that we have as a district. We know that our district has a great ways to go as far as instruction, as far as student growth and achievement, but we are up to the challenge. And we're working hard to make, to making sure that our students receive the best education that we can offer and that they deserve. So we have been working tirelessly. I want to commend the team, the academic team in operations, in our executive directors here. They're here, they're long hours. We start the day early in the mornings, but we do what we need to do for our students, and I am very proud of the work that they do. I am very proud of the focus of the Board of Education and how much they have pushed me to do what is right and the trust that they have put in us to lead the district. So I'm going to stop here and pause for any questions that you may have. Yes.
Thank you. This is amazing and, you know, it's great. What are you guys doing about the culture? You know, as educator, we know we have to build a culture before this works. Many of the complaints and stuff we get is kids hate going to the schools. And that's culture-based, right? Transforming school culture is key. What are we doing as a district to build that culture of our kids going to school? Because you can have the perfect instructional priorities, practices, bring in the best people, but if the kids don't want to go because the culture is a negative culture, whatever it is. So could you talk about what practices you guys are doing to build the culture of, from pre-K all the way to the high school?
So thank you, Mr. Guardiola. That's actually a great question because one of the things that I have told the staff and I honestly believe is, especially in turnaround situations, we are in turnaround because of the adults, not because of the students. So as adults, we need to start working on that culture. And starting with the week that we had our principals back in sometime mid-July, I had been on the job for probably 10 days. We brought them in, and one of the areas that we worked on was the culture, how to set up culture for the schools, for the, in the classroom, in as a school. But more importantly, how do we work, you know, as adults to support students? And part of the culture that we are trying to promote and we are working hard on it is, it's really by modeling, having high expectations, having clarity on those expectations. Because in my case, personal case, when I do not know what is expected of me, there's confusion in me. And then I try one thing and I try to read the cues and, you know, if there's a smile or not, and with a mask, it's even harder now. So I believe in having clear expectations and modeling. I will not ask anyone to do something that I am not willing to do myself. So just last week, I was delivering professional development around observation and feedback and ensuring that our principals and our administrators have clear structures and clear expectations on how to provide feedback to our teachers. And it's not to provide feedback for an evaluation, but to provide weekly feedback, little things that teachers can change from one day to another, from one class to another, and feel success and see the small wins that they can have day after day. So we are working on ensuring that we provide that level of support, that teachers feel that level of support as they are supporting the students, but at the same time that we are providing from central office that level of support for administrators and our principals. So I think that is one of the, a couple of the main things that we have been working on. Actually, we were on Cabinet today and we were discussing that culture is actually built every 30 seconds, right? So you can say, or we can say, or I can say all we want or all I want. It is my actions, you know, minute after minute that will actually build or break a culture. So we are being very cognizant of that and holding each other accountable for, for doing and behaving in ways that we say we want to behave. Any other questions? And so I'm just going to go ahead and move on to another item that I wanted to share with you. Yes, actually, yes, thank you for reminding me because one of the things, and some of you were at the ALSSAP School, as far as supporting students so that they can feel excited and they want to come to school, going back to the culture. We have partnered with the Aldrin Foundation for Space Exploration, for a space exploration program, and also are partnering with the Space Foundation in Colorado Springs. And we purchased through the Aldrin Foundation, we purchased a giant map, a Mars map, giant, like the size of probably this area here. And we have another one that is a little smaller, it's the Moon Map. But with it comes little rovers that are remote, and they walk through, the students can maneuver them and walk through the maps. And the maps have these sensors, and now we're using all these technical words that I do not know how to explain. You know, maybe we need a third grader to come and explain it one day. But they have these sensors and they can actually see Mars and they can actually learn, you know, outer space. Now, this is one of the things that we're bringing to the schools. ALSSAP has it, ALSSAP is a STEAM school, but we are making it available for other schools as well. Next week, we're going to be meeting with the principals of other schools. We're going to allow them to go and see the map, the maps, these two maps at ALSSAP and have them say, okay, do, is this something that you can integrate? Because this is not only to show or to be teaching space exploration, it is through space exploration that we're going to be teaching the standards. And this is something that is exciting for the students. They were actually learning, we have experts from the Aldrin Foundation flying here to provide professional development to the teachers. And we have, through the academics office, we have our science department working on bringing the teachers together and developing lessons to teach the standards through this engaging activities. So that's something else that we're trying to bring for students, some excitement. And really, a message that maybe I can use this to send a little message out to you and everyone in the community to ensure that the kids are coming to school because we do have a student attendance problem. Our attendance in general is low, and like you said, Mr. Guardiola, you know, if things are not interesting, why would you come? I was one of them, that I was fighting my mom if I felt the school was not exciting. So it starts with us. So we are working hard on our end, and we want to send a message to our parents to also send our kids. And then we'll, we'll open that means of communication with our parents because if we think we are doing things to engage them, but it's not happening, we want to hear why or what could we do differently to engage our students? So that's one of the things we're doing at the elementary. We're having discussions with them to bring a program also for middle and in high school with them. So, and again, just to use it as a means, I believe technology should not be, you know, only in tech schools or STEAM schools. I think that's our world right now. So it should be something that is offered to all of our students because it's, what we said was the future is our present now. So, yes, thank you for reminding me of that. And one last thing in an effort to be completely transparent. As you know, two years ago, or you may know, two years ago, the State Board of Education ordered or required the district to have a managers group. And there was a managers, a managers group that was selected at the time. It is Adams 14 School Succeed, also known as MGT, has been referred as MGT most of the time. And the district followed the mandate and actually passed on all the managerial authority to this group. It was an expectation that after two years, there was going to be a midpoint where we're going to be looking, the district was going to be looking at how that work is going. And I would say that based on my experience and what I have learned, the district, the Board of Education and the district at large has worked in good faith with the managers group or the lead partner, you know, to abide to the state board, to the state board order. And most recently, there has been discussions, we are asked to appear in front of the board, the state board next week and really talk about some of the concerns that we have brought up based on an external evaluation. The contract, as I said, there was expected to be a midpoint. We brought in somebody external, the individuals from CDE, from the turnaround office, individuals from A14SS or MGT known as well. And I, we agreed on a individual to come in, external person to come in and do an evaluation. There were some findings that are somewhat serious for us. And then now we are in that process where we are coming to the state board next week to, you know, to explain a few things that are happening. I think that at the end of the day, what I can say is, me personally, and I know the Board of Education for Adams 14, we expect the very high standards and high quality of work of anybody coming to support our students. I would say that is true for external consultants, external managers, or internal employees. I think it's a high level of standards for everyone because our students deserve the very best, and that is what we are committed to doing. So that is happening. I know there's a lot of noise or, you know, you know, things going around that, but that is in the spirit of being fully transparent where we are. And then, you know, we'll be taking it day by day because things change quite rapidly. But again, what I can say is that is our commitment from me personally and from our Board of Education to abide to the state board order. Board of Education to abide to the state board order. Uh, we are okay having managers, uh, and we are okay following their orders because we have been in turnaround for quite a while, and I understand that. Uh, we are just, uh, not okay with having managers or external individuals coming in and not offering or not giving what they promised they would give. Um, because I believe, and we believe, our students deserve the best. So, that's where we are with that. So you'll probably continue hearing, uh, more in, in, in our frequent updates.
How could we support you guys in that? Um, because there is a lot of noise, there's choppy, you know, there's a bunch of news articles out there, and that is concerning. Residents come to us and ask us, are they gonna shut down our district now? Or, so, as the other elected body of this area in the core city, how do we support Adams 14 while you guys go through this process? Um, and, and I think, you know, I've been around for a long time, and, and you guys have been in good faith, doing what you're supposed to be doing. And, and from the reports, they didn't hold up their end. Um, so now you guys go back to state board. So, uh, how do we support you all in this new, uh, venture you guys are gonna go through?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Guardiola. And I'm gonna start and I'm gonna pass it on to any of the, uh, board members if they wanna add anything. But I would say, um, you know, seek to be informed, uh, and try to find out exactly what happened. Uh, you know, when, when things like this, uh, come to light, um, most of the time, people hear from one side. And, uh, so I would encourage everyone, everyone here and everyone, you know, who is listening or maybe listening on YouTube, uh, to get informed of exactly what happened, um, asking the questions. I came here, uh, on July 1st was my first day, and I asked a lot of questions. I liked, I asked for evidence. Uh, when I heard a response, I'm like, okay, so how would that work? And how does it look in the school? And I kept asking for questions because I believe, um, I truly believe that's, that's why I'm here for, to ask the questions and to hold everyone accountable. Uh, we talk a lot about holding students accountable and to high standards, but we forget that we need to start with the adults. Uh, we will have a meeting tomorrow, uh, a board meeting, a special board meeting. We have invited A14SS, also known as MGT, to come in and present. Uh, so I would encourage everyone to continue asking questions, to, um, to get informed, to look at the reports, uh, maybe even look at, um, probably some old, uh, board meetings that are out there because I believe, uh, in, in YouTube, uh, because I believe it actually, it will actually start helping everyone, um, see and hear what, what things were said and, um, and done in the past. And, um, and we are here to answer any, any questions, you know, as, uh, we're gonna be sharing as much as we can. Um, you know, when lawyers are involved, sometimes we cannot say much, but I can, I can assure and repeat over and over, um, we have high expectations for anyone who comes to the district, whether they are external or internal. We have paid over $7 million to this group in two years. And, um, I believe we should see, you know, great improvement. Uh, not everything was horrible. I think that there were some things that were, uh, that started having some traction. Is it, you know, to that level of, um, ticket? I don't know. Um, in my opinion, um, again, I will ask for evidence that they lived up to what they said they were gonna do for our students. Because external individuals, they come and go, we stay here, and our students, most importantly, stay here. I keep saying, we all adults, we have a life, and we'll be fine. Whether we're here or somewhere else, you know, we'll find our way because we're grownups. Our students do not have that chance yet, and we owe it to them. So...
I just want, um, our community to know that, you know, this is an adult problem between A14SS, the district, and the state board. We're here for the kids, and that's who matters. And whether this is going on here with the adults, we're still gonna be here for the kids and making sure that we're doing the very best that we can for them. And that's why we hired Dr. Maria, because she has the experience and turnaround that, um, perhaps the management team didn't have. So, um, so I just think that's the important thing that we need to let our, our community know is that, you know, that's an adult problem, but we're still here for the kids and making sure that they're being educated the best that they possibly can.
Um, Councilwoman Guardiola, thank you for, um, for offering, uh, other solutions or how we can possibly work together. I think that, um, there are a lot of intersections between your work as, um, councilman, councilwoman, mayor, and what we do as a board. And I think that the more that we can authentically collaborate, I think the better off our students will be. Um, I'm glad that this happens. This is the first time that I see, uh, faces, um, for our councilmen and women. And so I think that the more we can do stuff like this and, um, share ideas, talk about different things that are going on, and how we can improve, um, all sectors of our city, I think the better off we'll be.
Um, thank you, Councilwoman Guardiola. I, I, um, really welcome that question because I know you guys are basically our eyes and ears, and I'm sure there's lots of talk, lots of questions. Um, I, I think to support us, I think as, um, our superintendent said, you know, if you can keep apprised and let us know how we can keep you more informed about what's going on. Um, and also sending those folks on to us. I think the more folks are involved and the more we hear directly from our parents, our community members, um, the more we'll be able to keep them involved along the way.
So, I just wanna say thank you and echo what everybody else said up here. Um, and once again, um, really appreciate that, the offer, because I think in all the years, it's, it's very difficult to gauge where city council is compared to where we are. And, um, just putting it out there in, in all transparency, um, the majority of you do not live in the core city. And so the school district that you're most familiar with is 27J. So it's a very different makeup down here. So, um, like our, um, superintendent said, you know, just, uh, keeping informed and, uh, really doing some of that research on, uh, and asking those tough questions really does help from you as well. Um, because I know it's kind of like a learning curve if you haven't lived in this area, um, to actually understand what's going on with our community. But, you know, I think for the longest time, um, we have felt, at least I personally, we feel like the stepchildren, that's our inside joke, we're the stepchildren of Commerce City because we're overlooked, we stay in the shadows, we don't have the, um, the voice that everybody else has. And we are trying to change that as a board, that our kids need to be the focus and it needs to be student-centered, student-focused, whatever we do. And so we appreciate that you guys are looking at that as well because it is, in the end, it's not, it's like our president said, it's the adult issues here. But in the end, um, we wanna make sure that we're doing right by our children and the students because that's 6,000 and some little lives out there. I keep saying this about data, anybody who knows me, I keep saying, humanize the data. So when you look at that data, make sure you're humanizing it and putting faces to those numbers because they're not just numbers. So, thank you.
Just a quick follow-up. Um, is there a way you guys could send information to Roger and he could send it out to us? And for those of us that wanna keep up with that. Um, because often we're hearing from the residents or choppy if you subscribe to them. And, uh, you know, what better way to get information is come from you guys, right? Especially if we're trying to collaborate more and keeping, keeping us informed. So, if you guys could have worked something out with Roger and then he could disseminate that information to us, um, that would be helpful.
Absolutely. Absolutely, yes. Uh, there are some documents that have been posted already to the website, most recently. I know there are more to come, but we're gonna make sure that, you know, through Monica, we send them to Roger, um, so that, and we can say, you know, they're available, but here it is, you know, for easy access. Uh, so that, um, that might be, you know, um, something that we can for sure do, uh, to ensure that you are, um, you know, up to date with things and, and, you know, I'm available if any of you want, you know, to call me. I passed on my card, uh, actually before we started. Um, so I'm available for answering any questions or clarifying anything because sometimes those documents are long and sometimes I feel they go in circles. Uh, not this in particular, that any, you know, legal document, you look at long documents and you're trying to make sense of it. So I will be available to any phone call or any, you know, quick meeting over coffee or anything.
Any other questions?
I don't, I don't have a specific question. I just wanted to respond to some of Maria's comments, if that's okay. Um, and a lot of us don't live in the core city, uh, but I, and I, I don't either. What I wanna say is, I don't have a kid in either district, and both are equally important to me. And, and I really, I advocate for education across the board. And so I hope you guys feel that support and, um, know that I'm interested and invested in, in all of the kids in Commerce City.
Yes, thank you, thank you for that. Because actually, um, sometimes, you know, I have, um, been in education 32 years. Um, and I say, one day I'm gonna retire. My husb, my husband says, no, you're never gonna retire. And I said, no, I really, I will retire one day. Uh, and as such, I need to make sure that I leave, you know, the schools and the system a better place than I found it. Because when I leave, I wanna know that they're better than when I, I was there. Um, but I have been, you know, throughout those 32 years, in different states, in different districts, and in two different countries. And, um, so I am the very last one who can say, oh, I'm from here, I actually, I'm from, you know, I've been here like since July 1st. And, um, in the way that I see it, uh, because I had, I've had this experience, especially when there are districts so close, uh, my students are gonna be your students one day, and then your students are gonna be mine. And the way that I have, uh, seen education, uh, as an individual is, these are our students. Uh, not this district students, that district students, these are our students, these are our future. And, um, I believe that we have a national problem with the way that we are educating all of our students. Uh, and some of them, uh, some of our students are just falling behind, um, in ways that we hate to admit. Uh, but these are our students. So I, I do feel that support since I met all of you. And, and of course, I go out and, you know, uh, introduce myself, and I, I, I've learned that that is the best way for people to get to know me, for me to say, hey, I'm Carla. Uh, and this is a little bit of what I think. Uh, but I do welcome, uh, the support, uh, and we have felt it. And this is not by no means, uh, I, I think that, again, it's an adult issue. But I think that we can all agree that we want the best for our students, your children, my children. And, uh, and we can find a common ground there, and we can find ways for us to collaborate to make, to, to make sure that our students get the best end of it, not the short end. And, uh, in this case, I do appreciate the support because, you know, this is not about, you know, one group being victorious here, it's about, will our students be victorious after all this noise calms down? And, and that's, that's my main goal, uh, to make sure that they are okay, whether they're our kids, they will jump to the other district, and then some of them will jump back here, and that's okay. That's okay. It's, it's, at the end of the day, our, our students and our, our future. So, thank you for that.
First of all, welcome. You've only been here 60 days, and you're already very immersed and knowledgeable. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
You mentioned that there is an absentee problem, and I wondered if you're getting feedback from your students as to what is causing the problem? Is it higher than usual? Um, what is it related to? And is that something specific that city resources could help with, could help the parents in some fashion that we aren't aware of?
That's an excellent question, and thank you for that. Um, yes, we, well, when I go to schools, I talk to kids, right? And, um, especially at the middle school, what I hear is, uh, well, we don't like the bullies and the bullies here, and they, you know, they, they do feel that, um, that, that peer pressure, uh, from other students. So, uh, we actually, during cabinet, we talked about that today, and we introduced, um, our new, um, director of security, uh, because the individual left, uh, he took another job as an administrator in a school. So we had that vacancy. And one of the things we talked about was how can we use now this resource and maybe partner, now that you say, with community resources to bring some of this social and emotional support that students need. In other rodeos, like I say, I would have groups coming in and with parent permissions, we had social groups, and students just talked about their social challenges that as teenagers they needed to cope with. Uh, and, and part of that was bullying, or feeling rejected, or, uh, not feeling belonging. So I believe there's a lot of opportunity there, uh, for us to partner. I don't believe it's actually, well, without counting COVID period in, in this pandemic, I don't believe it's, uh, very different. Uh, of course, COVID, as I said, is an outlier, but very different from years before. And I think part of that has been because our system, operational system, has not focused on when a kid comes in late, we mark them from absent to late. And then that student remains absent. In other states, because, uh, the state looks at, um, attendance for funding, uh, we have been on top of that, right? Because it, it, our funding depends on, are we marking our students present when they are present? So we make sure that not one child comes into the door and stays absent, right, in the, in the system. But we don't do that here. So I think that is a way, okay, well, you were absent, now you're not. Good for you, right? But we did not, did not have that, um, care or that step in the, in the process to go back and mark the student presence. So that alone, I know that has already yielded some results. Uh, Mr. Mario Marquez, he is our, uh, chief of business operations, and he is actually supporting with, um, providing a system and instructors for, uh, attendance and for actually all of our student information, um, platform. Uh, but Mr. Marquez is an expert Six Sigma, black belt, if I said it right, uh, meaning that he is an expert in systems and in, um, structures within organizations. So he is taking a close look at all of our systems to make sure that we are marking students present when they're present, or late if they're late, or absent if they remain absent, right? Uh, but also that we are providing professional development for adults to make sure that they know how to navigate the system. Um, and aside that, I believe that it has been also important for us, uh, to make sure that we communicate with our families, just like Mr., um, um, Guardiola, uh, Mr. Guardiola said, communicating with our families why they do not wanna come. We hired full-time parent liaisons for the schools before we had part-time. Uh, people at the elementary, now we have a full-time person. We paid, um, we're paying dispositions with our ESF funding, and we're gonna be transferring that to the additional at-risk funding that we received from the state recently. And, um, and Mr. Marquez's team is working on, uh, the structures to, in professional development to help them reach out to the families and find out a little bit more of why is it that they're not coming. Uh, and then the next step to that will be reaching out to, to, uh, the, the, uh, businesses, the community, uh, the city for additional resources based on the needs that we see are happening. So, I think it's a combination of things. Is it much different? Maybe not. But one thing I know, we need our students to come here so that they can learn and we can turn around the district. So that is definitely one of our priorities.
And, uh, I was really excited to hear about your partnerships with aerospace. And, um, I had the wonderful opportunity to work at Metro State for a few years. And I hope that you're having those conversations with the aviation department too, because there would be lots of great opportunities for students. Wonderful. Thanks.
Uh, thank you. Really quick, I just wanted to thank you guys. Um, I know, I think the past couple of years, this is the first time- couple of years, this is the first time, your Parks and Rec staff have been amazing. They've reached out to me numerous times. I think they've reached out to administration just to coordinate something as simple as when our breaks are, or when we're having a big conference or something, just to involve our students more. So I just wanted to put that out there and thank your staff because that's been awesome.
And one last comment, you know, after your, just your remarks. Yes, we are in connection with them. We already have a partnership and through the Aldrin Foundation, we're looking to extend that partnership. Last month, maybe three weeks ago, we met the city manager and Roger and, you know, the team there met with our team in the CTE program. And the understanding that we have is as part of the commitment, you know, to, to bring a third-party partner to us and into the building that you are granting us to use, we are looking into Metro State. So yes, we already have them as a partner and we are looking for avenues to actually extend that and they will become our official partner probably or potentially if it works out, so that we can bring programs to the building that you're allowing us to use as part of your development with them as partners. So.
So I just wanted to say, going back to your original question as to the absenteeism rate, it's not anything that's unusual, I think, for a lot of school districts. I think the difference is that this school district seems to have more people willing to help out in the community. A lot of community-based organizations in the past would be willing to help, but now we actually, hopefully will have a structure on how to be able to do that in a way that makes sense so that the families could get what they need. Because I, I do believe that a lot of it is, at least in this area, has to do with a lot of those basics that our kids are lacking. And just very basic things that they're lacking. And so we just want to make sure that we're doing a better job of connecting what's already existing out in the community with what the need is. And I think that once that's done in a good way, then that should help. So I'm very pleased to hear that and to know that our parent liaisons are now full-time because that's part of what we were hoping they would be doing is actually connecting people to what the resources are depending on what the need is. And so just putting it out there that for years, we've had really good partnerships with community-based organizations and we want to continue growing that. So thank you.
And just one last example of how we are changing our structures and our systems to support students with attendance. One of the high schools actually that is serving, Lester Arnold serves students from all across the, our area. And I learned in my first visit, you know, when I am asking questions, because again, I ask a lot of questions, I get that. We're talking about students in the attendance and what time they come in. And I learned that we do not, we were not offering bus transportation for students. And my first question is like, why aren't we offering that? And I charged Mr. Marquez with, okay, find out why. And by day one, we had buses that would offer that. So that will ensure that our students will have that, those means of transportation because sometimes it's not at a walking distance for some of our students because we serve a larger area at this school. They, they are far away from the school. And so now we want to make sure that they have that transportation option if they choose to use it. So those are the kind of things and structures that we're looking at to ensure that they have those basics because transportation would be one of them.
Thank you very much for the, the update as well as the conversation. And I cannot figure out this microphone. I echo the comments from our council members as far as support. And, you know, I think two years ago, I think the relationship between the school board and the city council hit a low. And maybe three years ago, but, but some point in there, it definitely hit a low. And I appreciated all the work on both sides of the aisle in order to get that relationship back so that we can have meaningful meetings like this. You know, the, in the end, it's the, the students in our community that benefit from that. And to coin your phrase of it's an adult problem, allowing our two boards to not see eye to eye is adults not working towards a common goal. So we greatly appreciate the fact that everybody is working towards that goal to get education for all of our residents, no matter where they live, to be of the same high quality that we expect for everybody. So greatly appreciate that. If you are ready for us to take over, I will introduce our next part. Great, thanks. So we have an update on projects and things that are going on in Commerce City. And I will actually turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Tinklenberg, to provide this update since the information comes primarily out of his office and he knows it better than me just to read slides and can provide some color commentary to it as well as providing the actual information as well.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to get together. Figure out this clicker. All right. So just to give you a quick overview of what's going on in the historic part of the city. Overall, we're seeing a huge amount of development activity. Of course, a lot of that is in the northern area where there's open land to be, to be developed. And that takes the form of both residential and industrial type of activity. So I'll get into that in just a little bit. But the biggest project that we have in the historic part of the city is Mile High Greyhound Park redevelopment project. And that's going to provide significant level of residential housing of all types. So you'll see single-family standalone homes, you'll see duplexes, you'll see townhomes, you'll see condominiums, as well as apartment buildings. And the big four-story building that's already under construction and all the way built up to the top, that's, that's the, it's called LIHTC. It's low-income housing tax credits. And so what that means is that it's basically income qualified to live there. Now, some people have a concept of, oh, low-income housing. But the sad reality is, it's the type of housing that a teacher can afford. And so hopefully, this is an asset to our community and provides workforce housing for people that are starting out. And, you know, it's a sad commentary that we pay our teachers that low. It's not the fault of the school board. It's, it's an American society problem. And so hopefully this helps in terms of housing those who are finding it difficult to find housing. And we know that's a metro-wide problem, not just Commerce City problem. Another opportunity that we had was to apply for a grant for renovating Monaco Park. Monaco Park has been a historic part in the, in the city for a long, long time. And this is an opportunity to completely renovate it. And we're assisted by Adams County Open Space Grant. That comes through the county tax revenues that, that they collect for open space. So that's a tremendous help to getting that park renovated. It's in the RFP for Design currently. So we, we expect proposals to be coming in shortly. And as you mentioned, at the very beginning, you were showing slides of the gymnasium improvements. Again, great opportunity for us to work together and, and be able to find funding for a project. Some of those gym floors were in terrible shape. And so it's, it's good to have that for the students now. This is a Spanish version of what I just said. I can't read it. In terms of development activity, we're expecting to see 2,500 additional residential lots in the entire city over the next three to five years. Again, tremendous growth happening each year. Our staff is very busy. We have 185 active land use cases. That jumps up to 195 and bounces back and forth in that amount. And to give you a perspective, we're a city of about 65,000 currently. Cities that are 275,000 have that number of land use cases. So that's just the volume activity that, that's happening. Building permits, we issued 362 just in the month of July. Again, just huge amount of activity. We expected things to slow down during COVID-19. Instead, it ramped up and we're not seeing a slowdown this year as well. Over 3.2 million square feet of industrial facilities has been built. We have additional in the pipeline. So overall, it's approaching 7 million square feet of industrial warehousing type of facilities that are being built or in the design permitting phase right now. We're also conducting a study for a new urban renewal area that would be up around the RTD station area. So that would include the area of, of the old Alsup School. So in that general area. And as we move forward with that, we'll be in contact to talk to you about that project and how it can benefit the school district as well. And then up in the north, Sted School will open this fall and that'll be for primarily agricultural-related training. So I don't know what opportunity that provides for your students, but again, it's an opportunity for, for enhancing the educational availability. Mile High Greyhound Park, as I mentioned, it's underway. The infrastructure is nearly complete. It will offer close to 500 housing units. And the first group of single-family homes are under contract right now. They'll be available for move-in at the end of this year into 2022. And the duplex units are under construct, are under permit review right now. So they'll be starting construction shortly. Mentioned all the different types of homes that, that are available. Again, as I mentioned, single-family, duplex, condos, townhomes, apartments, all of, all of different types of housing will be available. One of those that's under contract, I just signed today. So I'll be a resident. In terms of capital projects, 88th Avenue widening, that's ongoing. That's all the way from I-76 to Highway 2. That is in final design at this point. It's gone through preliminary design and environmental review and all of that type of thing. That's always a long process. And they're starting some of the right-of-way acquisition that has to happen with that as well. Same thing with Rosemary Street. If you've ever been up in that area at, say, 4:30 to 6 o'clock, it's almost a parking lot. So this will greatly improve that, that area in terms of the corridor traffic conveyance. And then we're also acquiring land in Irondale for drainage. We need approximately four to five different parcels to accommodate storm drainage. There, that was never planned because the area wasn't planned. It just grew up and definitely needs to, to prevent flooding. Dahlia Street is in final design. That's an Adams County project. We're contributing money to it, but they'll lead the project and that will occur in 2022. And then Derby area lighting improvements are coming. That is being done in cooperation with not only Excel, but also the South Adams County Water and Sanitation District because they're putting in new water mains in anticipation of us doing not only the street lighting project, but also future street improvements. So that's ongoing. And then comprehensive plan for the city is being updated. And that's been in outreach during this summer, getting input from citizens. And so again, the outreach is, the concerts in the park have been really helpful in getting people to provide comments. And that's been both in English and Spanish. So greatly appreciate that. Any questions? I ripped through that pretty fast, but. Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Just wanted to mention a couple of things. On Monaco Park, we're trying to get an all-inclusive park, just like the one behind us. So our staff and Roger are working with the design to have another all-inclusive park in, in Commerce City, just like Veterans Park. And then we passed a ordinance, given every school the opportunity to apply for $2,500 in the city of Commerce City. Roger's staff is working on that. How do they apply for that? It's a sponsorship through the city. So every school could get up to $2,500 from the city. So look for that information when Roger's staff is getting the, or the sponsorship or the proposal for that.
Okay. So thank you. That's good information to have. I actually, and I'm just going to put this out there, in the spirit of true collaboration, you know, both school districts in our county or in our city, and all of them in our county, have a high percentage of homeless students and families. And with some of the new builds or the, the new low-income or income-based housing that's out there, what we, at least what my experience has been when I'm trying to help a family is that there's usually like a waiting list, there's a lottery, there's always something, some type of barrier. But there's never been really that collaboration. And I know that we still have to talk a little bit more because I had talked to the mayor the other day of just having an idea of how we can all collaborate and help some of these families with the actual housing piece of it. Because we keep referring them and they keep going in circles and circles because there's nothing out there. There's just, when it comes to housing and low-income housing especially, it's, it's sad to have families who've been living in motels for two years paying, you know, 60, 70% of their income just so that they're not on the streets. They're still considered homeless because they can't find a place. I mean, even if they got a voucher, it's really hard to find a place. So is there a way that, that's something that could be looked at, at some type of level of how we can do this for both school districts and help some of those most in need families that are struggling and have been struggling for years now?
Thank you for that question. We just had a meeting last week with Adams County staff as well as staff members from other cities in Adams County. And starting discussion and work on a regional collaboration to address that. You know, Denver is certainly a component as well. It's a bigger issue than just Adams County. So, you know, there's going to have to be some type of collaboration with city and county of Denver as well. But back to Adams County, what we talked about is, you know, pooling our American Rescue Plan Act money to address the issue and, and work on a comprehensive solution. And the reason I had the freedom to speak up at that meeting and, and, you know, offer our collaboration is the city council set that as the primary focus of the use of our ARP money, American Rescue Plan Act money. And so given the leadership of our city council, I was able to tell them, our council wants a bold plan. And that needs to be addressing comprehensively the whole issue of homelessness. You know, you have, you have subcultures of homelessness. You know, there, there's the drug addicts that people usually think of. There's the alcoholics. There are those that just simply have a terrible home or family situation that put them into homelessness. There are those that, it's a chosen lifestyle. It's like, okay, you know, it, it's going to take a whole It's like, okay, you know, it's going to take a whole thought-out, comprehensive approach to address those different types of situations and needs. And we need to be thinking upstream. In other words, you know, let's not just treat the symptoms, but let's go to the sources of these problems. And, you know, some of that is mental, you know, so that takes, you know, mental health approach. You know, there's many different causes, as I said. So again, we've started that conversation and hope to be able to pull that together fairly soon.
Well, I appreciate that. And, you know, the matter, I guess here, and I get that there are the subcultures and the way I just see them, you know, every human being has some type of need. And those are just needs that have not been met for the chronic homeless. But in this case, I'm just thinking, you know, something low-hanging fruit type of plan to really help those families that are, you know, income eligible, they are able to, they're staying in the hotels with their kiddos. Is there something that we can, that we can all partner on where we are addressing some of that homelessness and that definition as it goes under the school definition of McKinney-Bento and not really, because yeah, the chronic homeless issue, that is much bigger than just Adams County and Commerce City. That is, that's going to take everybody and we need to address that. You're right. But I think right now, I'm thinking ahead as to, if we do that now for our youth and they're not growing up homeless, it's going to really help the community in the end because you're doing something now for them as opposed to interventions later. So that's where I was coming with that question. Thank you.
See if I have any better luck talking in this one. The challenge that you brought up as far as a waiting list and as far as how long will it take for somebody to get into an income-controlled apartment, that's always going to be present. And the reality is, is, you know, that's going to have, what, 220 low-income housing apartments there, roughly 220?
Roughly.
They'll be full, you know, and a lot of people are going to be shut out because it's not enough, you know? The bigger issue that I see whenever I think of that is, you know, it was actually that portion of the project that almost derailed it. You know, the ability of the developers to get the bonds and the financing forward to be able to construct that project was delayed for an extended period of time. The bond market dropped out, challenges with, you know, getting approval through authorities and through banks and everything else. And it makes it very difficult. And so while we would all love to say, let's put up another project that is going to help more families, as long as that red tape process is out there, as long as the difficulties in getting financing and getting these projects onboard continue, it's going to be that much harder to be able to get these projects moved forward. And, you know, so by the time you figure in where are we going to put it? How do we finance it? How do we get everything else in line to make it happen? It's a problem that goes beyond anything that anybody truthfully at the local level is going to be able to solve. And it's going to require solutions at the state and the federal level to figure out how do we free up funding for these projects to allow families to have an affordable place to live? And it is sad that, you know, yeah, we have people who are living in apartments. We've got people who are living in apartments, excuse me, motels and people that are living in, you know, facilities that were never designed for long-term occupation like that. But as much as we would want to go and continue to put up projects like this that are going to be able to support the community, we're going to need support at the state and national level to change how it is these projects can be financed. And that is going to require a level of advocacy that everybody needs to team up together to say, hey, let's make it easier to get this money flowing. You know, we want to talk about $4 billion in infrastructure, $4 trillion in infrastructure going, here's a need, here's a specific need that we truly need to put some of this money into to make it easier for developers to put these projects up and allow people an affordable place to live. And right now, the way this country is, I just don't know how we get there.
When I think about one of our priorities, it's recruitment and retention. So I can see that the income-based housing could be a really good incentive for teachers, younger teachers coming into our district and being able to afford someplace near where they work. So, I mean, that's an exciting thing, but as you said, I mean, there's going to be people competing for those apartments like crazy. So, but it could assist with our recruitment and retention, so.
And I would just like to add that I think that if we're only looking at this issue through the lens of trying to get more affordable housing, we are going to be in our most marginalized and oppressed communities already. I feel like as Commerce City, we can also be looking at this issue proactively and what can we do to stop this from happening opposed to getting it at the tail end and saying, let's do more affordable housing? What systems of oppression are operating right now in our city that we can begin to analyze and look at and change? So that's just another option as well.
If there's no other questions, we'll turn it back to you for wrap-up.
I did just want to say something about the Monaco Park. That's great because about the accessible playground. This one over here is just absolutely wonderful and I know it's been touted in other communities. So I think that's great that you're thinking about that for that Monaco Park as well because Rose Hill's right there and it's just, it's absolutely fabulous. So, uh-huh. We have one more presentation, I believe. Is that correct? Yeah? Okay. Sorry.
Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing us to be here. This is a power room. This is impressive and I'm so proud and honored to be here with all of you amazing leaders that are moving our community forward. Thank you for everything that you do every single day, your commitment and your dedication to a better city. My name is Maria Gonzalez and today I also want to welcome Dr. Loria to Commerce City. We haven't formally introduced ourselves, but I've heard so many wonderful things about you and all the work that you've done and I'm really looking forward to helping our community together. So, well, today we are giving you a presentation and it'll be in English and Spanish on this slide as well. Again, my name is Maria Gonzalez. I am the founder and executive director of Adelante Community Development, a Commerce City, Adams County nonprofit organization, serving our Latino, growing Latino population. And today with me, I have Whitney Connor. She is, most of you already know her, executive director of Kids First and also part of the Rocky Mountain Partnership's Health and Mental Health Champion. And Becky, she is our CEO of Rocky Mountain Partnership and the Backbone Team. And also we have Kaia Swanson. She is on part of the Backbone Team and a senior director of the policy and advocacy for the Rocky Mountain. Today is with the spirit of collaboration, as I see everybody willing to really devote some time about what can we do better to serve and move our community forward. Want us to take us to understand more about growing this coalition of community leaders across our region who have embarked to the ultimate diversity, equity, and inclusion effort by working together to close disparity gaps and improve economic and social mobility, which include a data scorecard that we have developed that will hold the accountability to the impact that we want to create. And with these, there's five areas that are collective work that are currently happening. And we want to understand and find out ways and opportunities that we cannot collaborate, both the city of Commerce City elected officials and Adams County School Districts, so that we can further engage in this community work. Let me tell you a little bit about our partnership, who we are and what we do. Basically, the Rocky Mountain Partnership is made up with a cross-sector of leaders such as city and county managers, school district superintendents and other leaders, higher education leaders, foundations, business sector leaders, and a select number of nonprofit executives who are leading this critical work. Healthcare leaders, mental health leaders, chiefs of police and district attorney. As you know, all of these individuals are absolutely important to get our work done. And we represent the region of Adams County, specifically these six municipalities, as you can see here, Brighton, Commerce City, Federal Heights, Northland, Thornton, Westminster, City of Aurora, and City and County of Broomfield. And this is such an important thing because we continue to grow and we continue to seek more leaders that are willing to step up to the plate and really make a difference. As you can see, both Whitney and I, you know, we come, we're part of the steering committee. And this is basically, it serves like an executive committee as a board. And this group is responsible for driving the strategy of this partnership. You can see, and these are so many other leaders that are really showing up and being accountable to the work. And we're made up of these champions and co-champions of our strategic areas of the collective work that are set for strategic priorities for the network. And we provide strategic leadership and guidance to the entire network. This is absolutely amazing group that I get to have the pleasure of working with and I hope that you know them all. And if you don't, it'll be a great opportunity for you to get to know the work that they're doing and how do we build this collaboration. They're amazing. You'll get a list of everybody's names here in a little bit as well, and of course, you have the presentation. And there's important information about the different individuals on each one of these committees and partnerships because we are accountable. And when we are accountable, we want to make sure that we follow the same direction of what is, that needs to get done in order for that. We are responsible for setting shared targets towards social and economic mobility, which is a theme that I've been hearing all night from each one of you in this leadership table. And on behalf of this network, and we hold them accountable for meeting these targets. The PAN is composed of a cross-sector C-suite level executives, including champions from investing partner organizations. And the PAN drives the implementation of the strategic plan. It supports removing barriers to the collective work and communicate out calls to action. In this room, we have included our new city manager, Roger, and we're very excited to connect with Superintendent Loria to officially welcome you to our board. Thank you. Thank you for wanting to serve. And you got the accountability members, so please check them out and reach out if you have any questions or need additional information or if there's any opportunities to engage. And right now, I'm going to pass it back to Becky and she's going to go through some of these conversations as well.
Thanks, Maria. I just wanted to say thank you for having us. For those of you who have been around the table for a long time, we are formerly known as the Adams County Youth Initiative. We changed our name. We have expanded to the city and county of Broomfield last year and the city of Aurora this year. So that Adams County Student Survey that your kiddos took for about a decade, that was our organization. But post-COVID and navigating racial unrest in our community, the Partnership Accountability Network, the leaders of our community, knew that it was time to really double down on this idea of collaborative work. And so that's really what we wanted to talk about a little bit today is, we've always been about keeping kids in school and out of the justice system and we've just really refined that and taken it to the next level around social and economic mobility. So really, I only have one slide tonight and I'm just really excited about Kaia and myself and our team. We are really here to support the convening, navigating, holding the partners accountable facilitation, strategic operations, project management, that really takes to have a regional touch point on making, connecting the dots between cities and school districts and nonprofits. And so just really on behalf of your neutral backbone team, we're really here to work for you and to support everything you've been talking about tonight. There's a lot of overlaps and I'm really excited about this next level of collaboration here in this particular region.
Thank you, Becky. And what is our why? As every, every time we create this positive impact, we got to go to our why. And we want to make sure that we're ensuring that people are economically and socially mobile. At the highest level, this group of leaders agree that economic and social mobility is really about ensuring that the community members can provide for themselves and for their families. And this is the truth of the matter, you know, people need to be earning an income that really reflects the quality of life that we want for them, that they want for their children and their families. So in order for that, toward the income, education and training and life skills are absolutely necessary. And that is why, you know, our community members are basically helping with this, with the work that you guys are doing today is really going to be part of that economic sustainability that we need. The current state, the North Metro Denver region is one of the fastest-growing regions in Colorado. This is nothing new. We've seen it. We've seen our neighbors. We've seen the community grown. You know, we just talked about how many new homes are coming into Commerce City and across the region, it just continues to grow. So according to this report released by the Bureau of Labor Statistics in March 2020, Adams County has ranked second out of 356 counties as one of the largest and fastest-growing counties in employment growth. And what are we really doing? How does that really translate? You know, I was listening to Maria about really making, humanizing the data. Because when we look at numbers, you know, sometimes we get so scared about the numbers. But what about the families that we know? You know, the last year and a half, our organization Adelante has been working directly with these people that we're talking about in numbers. People that continue to be left behind, people that have lost jobs, that were not able to get into paying their bills, looking for basic human needs and trying to figure out how to make ends meet at the end of the day, you know, with their families, with their loss of opportunity that they had at a job. And what we're trying to do here is remove these barriers, making sure that nobody is left behind and that people's basic human needs are met and that the resource and referral continues to grow and that we continue to advocate for what is most important for our families. As you can see, these numbers, you know, I won't read those numbers, but I'm sure you are very familiar with a lot of these data on your day-to-day work and also the opportunities that we have to make those changes in the areas that we represent from education, business, government, and everything else that goes around to make sure that we enjoy that better quality of life. The ability to pay the rent and losing a job and losing that stability, it's continued. Even though a year and a half already passed with the pandemic, we continue to see those, these numbers high. And there's got to be something that we can make sure that we work together on to improve the quality of life of these individuals. Something that we were able to see as well was small entrepreneurs that were not able to get any funding, that were not able to get any support or not much support for what they needed. So I think it's also very important for us to look at, how do we help home-based businesses, entrepreneurs that might not have the education level that it's needed for them to really have, thrive in successful business? And understanding how do these community members become homeowners eventually and changing those systems, right, that we all have access to? We cannot transform systems without addressing the racial inequalities that exist at a systematic level. And, you know, you were so right in regards to this issue, but what do we have to do now? How do we really dream about a better community? You know, something that I, when I worked for the city of Commerce City, I remember when all of us got together and we talked, we dreamed about quality of life. What does that really mean? And I am a product of that. I'm a Commerce City kid. I've been able to have a business. I've been able to, you know, do so many amazing things for my community, but not everybody has the same opportunity. So how do we make sure that we collaborate and bring this community forward? People that really want to, you know, grow and have a better quality of life. So if we can imagine about, you know, having a community where everybody is able to support themselves, right, and their families, just with the money that they make and that we're happy, healthy, and thriving and that we enjoy the vibrancy and abundancy of art and cultural and recreation and that we can, you know, look at regional poverty rates that are under decline and that generational cycles of poverty come to a halt. Our economic thrives, more spending, less reliance on social support and workforce with the talent is needed to attract and retain the growth of businesses and industry. We can do this. You know, as a partnership, we are committed to coming together to really imagine and make a reality, a community where all of this can happen, right? And the vision that we have today is this network is economic, is an economic and social mobility for all community members across our region. This is specifically for those who are marginalized because of race, ethnicity, gender, age, disability, zip code, or their circumstances. It is important for us to unite. And that is why our mission today is to achieve this economic and social mobility by working collectively today, using this data that sets targets and measure the progress towards those targets that we need, to advocate for aligning policies and funding so that we can remove those barriers and better to coordinate and improve the good work that is already happening in the group. is already happening in the group. This work with diversity and equity and inclusion is everything. Everything that we need in these systems that need to be changed to produce the inequity and disparity gaps that exist within our community, that we, many of us have lived and will continue to live if we don't decide to do something about it sooner than later. This is more than just building programs. So I'm going to pass it over to Whitney so that we can continue and share these data that we are going to be using for the accountability. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Maria. And thank you so much for hosting us tonight. To be with community leaders is a real privilege for us. And as we move forward to share this work with you and invite you to be a part of this movement. I know when I first joined the group, it felt pretty big. You know, it sometimes feels like you're boiling the ocean when you're bringing all of this work along and with this big, massive goal of economic and social mobility. But the backbone team helps us break it down, brings us along, helps us understand, uses data to move us forward. Yeah, I know that I started my work at Kids First and the history of working in nonprofit and public sector healthcare because I'm passionate about helping kids. So I can bring that voice to the table. Each one of us has a passion about this community and educating our kiddos and bringing the city along as city leaders. You know, these kiddos get a great education. They get to be future city council members. As we move forward with this data, we break it down and we use it to monitor our progress and we look at trends over time. So this is one of the ways that we break it down. So I think Maria mentioned that I'm one of the champions in that health and mental health area. Constance Schmidt, who's the CEO of St. Anthony's North, she and I are co-champions there. Basic needs. When we talk about basic needs, it means housing and food. With social and criminal justice, these are folks who are involved in this criminal justice system. We look at recidivism, even engagement in voting, because we know how important that is. Education and training, this is a high school diploma. This is a credential, apprenticeships, and even engagement in the armed forces. Economics and workforce development, so we're talking about the proportion of our community who are involved in the labor force, earning a livable wage, and even seeing the job growth in our communities. Where are those opportunities for a livable wage? So these are areas where we have co-champions, and these are our five areas of priorities because we know they roll up to that big, hairy, audacious goal. Okay. So you've heard us talk a lot about accountability already. That passion holds us accountable. This partnership and working with other leaders in our community holds us accountable, and the data is important, too. So we watch things like poverty rates, that credential attainment, self-sufficient or a livable wage, and that overall employment rate. So again, these are measures that we use to roll up to that hairy, audacious goal. These are data points that we found are available and relevant. Not everything that we think of and want to learn about is available out there, but we chose what we felt were really reliable and relevant data points for us. And the scorecard. So this is something that's in the works for us. As we think about becoming more and more focused with these co-champions, these five areas of priorities, these data points, this is sort of a dashboard. This is how we're going to watch ourselves, again, keeping ourselves accountable, setting those goals, targets along the ways, milestones, and then that, that date, or that, those trends. We want to see them going in the right direction. If they're not, then we make different plans. We remain nimble and responsive to the learnings that we have and the direction that we want to go in. You know, most importantly, I think we've said it, but it's worth saying again, we're looking at equity gaps. We know not all of our kids and young adults have the same opportunity. And that's a big area of focus, so we make sure we bring all of our community members along as we lead this group. So before I turn it over to Kaya, who will lead our conversation from here, just want to encourage you to become involved in our group. There are lots of opportunities to stay informed, to be a voice for your community, for the kids, for the city, all those things that we're passionate about. We would love your voices at the table. So thank you again for letting us have the chance to talk with you tonight.
Thank you, and good evening, everybody. Oops, sorry, that was loud. My name is Kaya Swanson, and as they have shared, I am the Senior Director of Policy and Advocacy for Rocky Mountain Partnerships Backbone Team. And myself and Becky and the other Backbone Team members support people like Whitney and Maria and all the other incredible names on that sheet in front of you, which I do want to mention is double-sided, to do the work that they're doing together. And so we've told you a lot tonight already about how the work happens, what we're tracking, what the method of partnership and collective work is. Now I'd like to share with you a little bit about the actual work that's underway. And so what you see on the screen in front of you are the five identified areas for collective work that the partnership is currently engaging in as a coalition of the committed. I'm going to dig into each of these five areas here in just a moment, but first want to share that in each of these five areas, there's a very rigorous process that our partners follow in order to make sure that the impacts of the work underway are as bold as they need to be in order to make this community move toward improved social and economic mobility for all community members. So in each of these areas, they do a lot of work to first, of course, understand what the data looks like, as Whitney so wonderfully brought to life, and make sure that we establish a baseline so that we know as we move forward whether or not what we're doing is working. Then they work together to set an initial target for where the community needs to move and what that target population should be. We can, we know that we cannot apply one solution to every single community member and think that it's going to work for every single community member because of the different things that people come to the table with, the different resources that individuals need to be successful. Then they work together to identify the factors that are most impacting the target, understand what programs currently exist, what's currently working, what can we scale, what should we scale back? And then based on what they determine, they build out the work and they determine what's working as they work collectively and really just scale that work and continue to find ways to improve it, make it better again, so that they are running toward that all-important social and economic mobility. So as promised, I am going to dig into each of these five areas of work to round us, round third and head toward home this evening. But again, just wanted to share with you a little bit about what the partners are actively doing together right now. The first area of work that they identified to engage in together is around credential attainment and work-based learning. So the opportunity here that they have identified is to close equity gaps for community members when it comes to attaining needed education or training. We know the research shows a post-secondary credential, whether it's a traditional degree, a license, a certificate, that makes it so much more likely that you are going to be able to provide for yourself and your family. So the partners set a goal. By 2025, they want to see the number increase to 50% of adults in Adams and Broomfield Counties earning a post-high school certificate, credential, or degree. That is an increase of nearly 46,000 people. So how are we going to get there? Right now, the work that is underway is that a navigation and wraparound supports action team is launched. They've held several meetings and are starting to design the actions that they are going to take together in order to reach that target. And so the call to action that I have for you this evening is, any staff within your organizations who are supporting community members with navigation, case management, wraparound services, anything pertaining to credential attainment and work-based learning, we welcome them to participate in the navigation and wraparound services action team in order to make sure that we have the right people at the table moving this forward, really to achieve that, that collective impact that is needed. The second area of work underway is around equitable hiring and retention. So really where this was born out of is partners saying, we are doing all of this diversity, equity, and inclusion work in the community. Are we turning internally to see where we could do better as well? And so right now, we are working to develop a resource toolkit to help organizations go along that journey of improving the equity of your hiring practices, job interview practices, and then creating a culture of authentic inclusive, an authentic inclusive culture to improve retention for especially women and people of color within organizations. And so the call to action here is executive HR staff and city managers and superintendents and anyone sitting in, in that seat who has something to do with the hiring process, job interview process, and the retention practices within organizations, we will be issuing a call to action, and you can take the pledge in September, just here in a few weeks, to join the other employers in our region who are committed to doing this, to looking internally and seeing where they can improve those practices for themselves. The third area of work underway is within housing and education. So really, the opportunity here is to close equity gaps for youth in their academic success. I don't need to tell the people around this table that housing insecurity has a huge impact on a child's educational journey. It can impact attendance, reading and math proficiency, and then overall impacts on mobility from poverty, which is a huge focus of the partnership, the mission of the partnership. And so we are receiving technical assistance as a partnership to engage in this work through Enterprise Community Partners, which is a national organization working in this space, and determining how there is an opportunity to work collectively within the housing and education spaces to, again, reduce that housing insecurity. And so the call to action is, any McKenney-Vento Housing Authority homelessness and housing services staff are welcome to connect with the Backbone Team. Specifically, right now, we're looking for data just to make sure that we're getting an accurate baseline and understanding of what the situation is in the region. This work will be ramping up rather quickly. Fourth out of five, so we're almost there, is the work underway in youth mental health. So I'm sure many of you around the table are aware that Children's Hospital Colorado has actually issued a state of emergency for the state of Colorado because the amount of youth suicide is so high. It's the leading cause of death for youth in Colorado, and Children's Hospital Colorado has, especially during the pandemic, seen just an incredible increase in requests for mental health care for their clientele. And so our partners have issued somewhat of an internal state of emergency of our own and are quickly ramping up work in this area to amplify and draw awareness to existing resources, scale existing mental health resources where possible, and identify additional strategies, really to bolster our youth in the state to make sure that we're addressing this crisis. And so any of your staff who are leading efforts connecting with youth, parks and rec staff, school counselors, anyone working in that space, is welcome to participate in the Youth Mental Health Collaborative Action Team, again, to make sure that we have the right people around the table to move this work where it needs to go in order to address this crisis. And then finally, the last area of work that we're engaging in is the one that I am the most familiar with as the Director of Policy and Advocacy. So we're doing a lot of work in the state policy and legislative space in order to identify and actionize policy change where needed to improve economic and social mobility. As you all know, there are a number of policy barriers that exist that can, can really keep individuals from being able to achieve that economic and social mobility. And so very proud of the work that the plan, the policy and legislative advisory network within the partnership has done over the last year. They engaged in the legislative session for the first time in 2021. All nine bills that they supported passed at the State House. And right now, they are working on ramping up for the 2022 session, devising their policy priorities within each of those areas that Whitney brought to life, basic needs, health and mental health, social and criminal justice, education and training, and economics and workforce development. And we'll walk into the state Capitol with a really strong list of things that we know need to take place in this region from a policy standpoint in order to move the needle toward social and economic mobility. And so the call to action here is, the plan is made up of people like yourselves, elected officials who work in our region and make the change happen where it needs to happen. And we are better for the voices we currently have. I know we would be better for having your voices around the table as well. And all of the perspective that we can get, get in that room ensures that the work that's happening in the state policy space is what it needs to be to move toward improved economic and social mobility. And so with that, those are the five areas in which the work is currently underway. And here, I will not make you listen while I read all of these themes, but this is who currently sits on the Policy and Legislative Advisory Network. As you can see, we have four of the Adams County Commissioners. We've got Adams 12 Five-Star Schools representative. We've got a number of policy folks from the agencies and the municipalities and the counties throughout the region, some city council folks. And so it's a, a really incredible group that's just very committed to seeing this work move forward where it needs to go. So with that, I am going to hand it back over to Whitney to close us out this evening. Thanks for your time.
Okay. You know, I'll, I'll just add one thing with the policy piece. I actually was a legislative staffer for a bunch of years, and the state Capitol is a busy, busy place. There are school groups coming through. I remember every year we had a mariachi band come in and even a, a band of trumpeters. There are, of course, lobbyists. There are staff members. There are non-Partisan staff. There are budget staff. But you know what? The people who got the legislators' attention when they came in the Capitol were the constituents. So don't ever feel as though your voice doesn't matter in that big, beautiful building. That's what really matters. So as you think about being a part of our group or advocating on behalf of the district, the city, where your passion lies, again, don't doubt how impactful that can be at that state legislative level. So again, thank you so much for hosting us. We're, of course, here to answer questions, but mostly wanted to share our work with you, engage you in it, welcome our new members, and always be available for you. Thanks so much.
So do we have any questions for this group?
As I'm sure you all know, the Supreme Court vacated the CDC's ruling to, and, or to extend more, the moratorium on evictions. And I'm just curious if you have any community data to kind, to maybe speak to what we might expect to see in the coming months related to that?
That is a great question and actually something that we're actively working on. So our partnership joined dozens of, of other signers from the region in submitting a letter to Governor Polis a few weeks ago to ask him to extend it at the state level. And, and that was successful for a short time. And, and now, as you know, we're, we're looking toward a large number of evictions. So what we are currently doing is having our data team within the Backbone Team dig into that because we frankly don't know the answer as to, to how many evictions we can expect to see. But it is something that's very much top of mind for us, so thank you for asking.
As a follow-up to that, wanted to make sure that you are aware that we have rental assistance that's available. So, and I know Adams County does as well. And about half of the money that we have been allocated has been, you know, already committed, so there's still a significant amount of money that's available.
That is great to know. One of the other things we're doing for the community is compiling a, a list of resources so that we can help community members navigate what may be impending for them. And so we'll ensure that we have that on the list if we don't already. Thank you.
So I was just going to say thank you, ladies, for your great presentation. This work, as you know, is near and dear to my heart because it's what I do on my day job, is helping families connect to resources. And so anything that we can do to help support, so I appreciate the city that when you did the, even the daycare, you know, the childcare assistance that you guys provided during this pandemic, as well as the, the housing, the rental assistance, I should say, it has been helpful. I just think that anytime the need goes up, the resources go down. So just, I'm a realist, and I know that there's going to be a high percentage of people facing evictions all across the Metro Denver area. That's going to create all kinds of other issues for our families. And then, and around the same time, I know that we're also looking as advocates at the, the renewals for the Medicaid and the CHP, the health insurance program. And that's looking at affecting, I think the last number I had heard from someone was like half a million citizens across the state would be impacted by that. Because during the pandemic, they were auto-renewing people and just giving them the program. Now they're going to have to go back and do redeterminations, and a lot of people might not know how to do that. So it's going to be quite an interesting few months coming up that are going to impact a lot of our residents and our kiddos. So thank you for all the work that you do, and I recommend that if anybody is interested in attending any of their groups, I highly recommend it. So thank you.
Yes, thank you very much for that presentation. I recognize so many names on this list as well as the other list that you shared that I've worked with or, or known, and you've got some great partners here. You really do. So that's, that's absolutely wonderful. Any other questions or, okay. So well, thank you for your attendance. Thank you for your attendance. We greatly appreciate it. These opportunities to These opportunities to get together are wonderful for both sides, the district and the city, and we look forward to the next one. As I said, they're always on the fifth Monday of a month, so our viewers can keep watching our websites, and we will have the next one on our website, both of our websites, so that they'll know when to tune in. So with that, I will go ahead and, and close this meeting. Again, thank you for your time, so.